We hit sixty with the peak of the Transverse thing and now we're at fifty-five staffs. So, um, yeah, I don't, don't read too much into the staff count numbers. I mean, we're, I guess you can't help yourself. It's curious, it's a reflection of a development cycle. But the development team is very consistent and it's a very consistent pacing of two thousand and fourteen pacing. And, and potentially a little better pacing right now, obviously, because we were able to grow the team by about five full-time developers. With the people moving over from, from Transverse. So we got some very good people move back, moved over to Transverse and some, some new designers and new, just a lot of, a lot of new faces that are bringing some top talent to MechWarrior. So, um, good news for MechWarrior and good news for feature development. So I think that answers your question, I, I believe.
All right, we had a couple of questions in here about the development of convergence mechanic. Both Tez Catley and Sweet Jackal wanted to know essentially, I was decision made not to continue the development of a convergence mechanic?
Well, I get a little bit worried answering that question because I don't know if necessarily everyone has a consistent idea of exactly what that means. On the one hand, you might just look at MechWarrior Online's current convergence of, you know, based on the location of the weapons on your mech, whether they're low-slung weapons or up on your head, and how quickly they converge to the same point. I'm not sure if referring to that mechanic to a bigger degree, or if you're referring to more of a, of a kind of spread mechanic where, you know, you shoot your six medium lasers off your hunchback six P and they don't all converge to the same spot, but, kind of go, you know, random inside of the, you know, circle, the circle, the expanding circle idea that you get in a lot of games. So I'm not sure which, Darren, which way would you assume I should answer that question?
Yeah, hold on, let me, uh,
Which way would you take that?
Well, Sweet Jackal's question goes in a little more detail. It goes convergence at one point in the closed beta was delayed dynamic and it was scrapped for many stated reasons. Not fun, hit reg and such, and we got instant dynamic convergence in its place. Is convergence something that is in a fixed state now or is PGI open to discussions about limited fixed convergence? Or cone of fire solutions to reduce pinpoint damage by increasing damage spread?
Right, okay, um, I don't think I'm really equipped to answer the first part of the question and I don't really remember that aspect and, you know, how it differs from currently, I apologize. I mean, the cone of fire thing I can answer and say, I don't like it, I don't want it. I firmly believe the vast majority of our players don't want it. I, I understand how it works for some games and how it worked for a game like World of Tanks with your, your, your main weapon and, when you're moving or how fast you're moving and a number of things. And I understand how this plays into the problem that we discussed when, you know, heat scale and bolting and putting large amounts of pinpoint damage in particular locations and how it would reduce that. But I just think, I believe firmly that the amount of angst that we get from our players about, say, something like heat scale, would be a tiny shadow of the rage that would ensue if I charged up my gals rifles and you're six hundred meters away and I put them dead center on your chest and one hits your left torso and one hits the right torso, or heaven forbid, one hits the right torso and one misses. I think it would be, I just don't think we're that type of game. I think the weapon systems, some are supposed to be pinpoint and if I, excuse me, if I put my lasers on your CT at, you know, three hundred, excuse me, three hundred meters away, I expect them to hit there. Auto cannons, et cetera. So cone of fire, obviously there's, it's in the game to a very small degree when it comes to, you know, the machine guns and, you know, so we use a number of different mechanics in our game. You've of course got the lock-on missiles, you've got the dumbfire missiles with the, you know, even though they have spread, they fall on a straight line, but there's randomness involved, machine gun has a spread. But, you know, the main weapons, auto cannons and lasers, they go where you tell them to go. I don't know, I, I'd be happy to have that conversation with a group of players at some point. I have a very hard time believing though that, um, that we,
Chat backed you up on that.
As we never want to go that way.
So I had a follow-up question about this, Russ, is, uh, this, this ties into actually a few, uh, questions I've seen here on our doc is, uh, armlock. Obviously, this is a, a conversation and a discussion piece. Armlock being able to turn that convergence off as far as if you have weapons on your arms or on your torso to basically negate that. And, uh, you know, now it's on for new players and you can turn it off. What is your thoughts on armlock? Do you like it? Do you do not like it? Do you think it adds, you know, to the, to this issue of convergence?
Well, um, here's one of those moments where I'll tell the players what they want to hear and that is that I'm a noob and I don't always see things the same way that they do as hardcore players that, you know, spend more hours in the game than I'm able to spend in the game. And what I mean by that is, I didn't, I didn't see that coming. I, I got blindsided by that, meaning when we put that feature in, that was about new players. It was about new players entirely. In fact, I thought, um, and some of the initial noise I heard and that maybe there's a point of almost discovery for most of our players or a lot of our players. I'm sure there's some very competitive players that understood the mechanics of what made you a really effective MechWarrior player that, you know, you know, foresaw that right from the get-go. But I think I and I think a lot of people maybe didn't. It was just sort of like, why are you putting in this annoying little feature for new players? Because it's, um, you know, it's silly, you know, MechWarrior Online's more of a sim and you got a laser on your hunchback and your head and you got one on each arm and you got, you know, your autocannon up there and when you're, you can aim your arms up there and, you know, your torso can't, you know, aim as high and that's how you bring complexity and, you know, interesting mechanics to MechWarrior Online. And so why would you do this, you know, dumbed down, you know, leading us down the road of, you know, dumbed-down mech assault style products? That's what I kind of heard and what I thought the main concern was. So it wasn't even all that long ago when I just really kind of realized myself like, oh, like that sucks that, you know, our core players and our really good players, um, use that mechanic, you know, they use it to, to just make it that much easier to put, you know, their alpha where they want it to go. So I, I honestly, I wish we could make it a, um, a new user feature, meaning, you know, make it available for, I don't know, what's fair, first hundred matches or some criteria we determine together, then after that it's, you don't got it. You know, you want to, you want to put everything in the same place, you got to take the time to make sure your arms line up with your torso before letting loose. And just by nature of that and the extra skill and difficulty involved and the extra patience it'll take to make them converge together, you are going to spread the damage out a little bit more, you know, even just by a little bit. Instead of all going to CT, it's going to be spread out across CT and RT and just, it is going to increase lifespan of mechs at least a little bit. So I think it'd be great if we could back that out in a sense that we truly reserve it for new players, but, um, I would, you'd have to tell me, um, what the reaction might be from you, the players, um, if that was the case.
Phil, you got another one? That was a follow-up. Do you, you got a question or should I just go?
Go ahead.
All right, there was a, I'll just, I'll combine two questions here. One is from, well, Veager, Virger, whatever his name is, asks, why could PGI not deliver on many of the promises that were made or implied to founders? And then Lil Farret asks, why do you think so many founders feel abandoned by PGI? And what do you think PGI should do to address these players' concerns? So obviously two founders' issues.
You know, I, I almost feel like I answered that question.
You did, the second one you did.
Well, in the, in the first town hall, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I went on for quite a while about that. I, you know, I, I think it's probably better to refer you to that town hall and say, you know, listen to the answer. So, because otherwise, I mean, very lightly, I think we just, I, I mentioned it here earlier in this thing, a lot of times I don't think we understood the impact of some of our statements, meaning when you make a particular comment to your player base, even at times when we felt like it was, um, a comment or a suggestion of what we were thinking and the direction we were considering going, when maybe other criteria took us down a different path, it became a question of like, hey, you, um, you lied to us, you know, type of thing. So, uh, that'll, that'll make people go gun shy and kind of go the opposite direction with information and communication. So I, I think we found a better balance now and some of that's due to the, you know, the politics involved with, um, the process that was in place with IGP and this isn't like, uh, it's just, it's just the way it is. It's not like it's like they, you know, sucked or didn't want things to be good, they did, but I didn't, how many commander posts did I put up? You know, in the first two years? I don't know, a few, a couple? I don't, I don't even know how many, not very many, right? You guys could tell me that, someone could go by and you guys know all this stuff, it seems like. I do a couple of months now if I can and it just, before it was, it wasn't worth it. You know, I couldn't, I'd have to write up a commander post and send it to a bunch of my guys here, which in turn went to IGP, which in turn went to marketing department, which in turn either they said, geez, should we really be saying this? Or, you know, shutting it down or, um, by the time they were done, there were so many changes that I didn't want to post it. I said, what the hell's this? Like this just sounds like a marketing blurb now, it's not me communicating to the community at all. It's, it's, I don't like this, like I don't even see the point, not going to put this up. So too many processes and whatnot oftentimes could kind of cripple things. So there's a lot of things at play here, a lot of, I think this, this question really is about a lot of things I've already answered here tonight, um, whether it was kind of what was going on with two thousand and thirteen, the lack of support to do a feature like Community Warfare from our publisher. I touched on this in probably a number of different times, plus I've got the answer in the first, um, uh, town hall. And I guess at the same time though, I would just say, I'm, I plan on doing the things that I'm doing, you know, that I have been doing the last month and I plan on releasing Community Warfare and, you know, I plan on continuing those things. So if those things are not enough for you, I guess I don't have a, that's too bad, you know, I feel, I guess that feels bad because I don't know what else I can do other than, you know, what we've been doing this past month, what we're going to continue to do the rest of this year. And by the features that we are going to release and I hope that, um, if the founders at this point feel, that, you know, we haven't made, uh, recompense or, you know, that's not even close, I'd like to, I guess, hear about that from some of you because I don't, I don't really know for sure. That'll, that'll get me sidetracked pretty quick because obviously I take it very seriously and, uh, I've been doing some things, like we talked about the island comment, I mean, you guys heard my answer, I don't need to repeat it. I, I, at this point, I just want to turn that into some lighthearted humor, I guess that's my personality. It's like, in fact, here's a story for you. The infamous island comment, right? I have, uh, we have a cockpit item, believe it or not, and this was not done in any mean-spirited way, it was totally in good humor. Because I know a lot of you guys like to use that term or hopefully like to use it in the past and, and more of a, I guess, negative sense. I'm hoping it's turning into more of a positive sense now and, um, and that was, you know, for the, uh, reward, for the, you know, one-year loyalty award, we're going to give that out and so here it is. It's just a funny little thing with an island and water, it was pretty cool. But, you know, I had that one founder reach out to me, um, which prompted me to put that post out, had me look at it in a much different light than I had before. And I said, no, no, I mean, yank the island cockpit piece, we're not, it's, I don't know, like, I know some people would like it, they'd take it the right way, some wouldn't, it's too soon. So I don't know, if we'll ever do that, you guys let me know if you want it, but it's, it's pretty cool. So, um, sorry for the long answer, that is hardly an answer, but it's, I just think, you know, we've, it's almost like a summary of like, almost every answer I give here in last town hall and this town hall and every commander post and every, everything I've done for the last four weeks is answering your question as to what we're going to do. You know, to earn back trust and, and make you guys understand, you know, why things happened where they did, et cetera, et cetera. I hope it's enough.
Fair enough, good question, um, and a good answer. Now, Russ, it is going on two hours right now. We have a few more questions that are on topic, but for the most part, the questions we have now are off topic.
Hey, hold on, Darren, you're, you're breaking up quite extensively. All right, guys, uh, just to let you guys know, we got a ton of questions. So Russ, we have a question for you. We're going to move on to a break and if you're okay with that, or would you like to go on to a break and then answer a few more questions in the next hour?
Well, why don't you ask the people if they have more questions or?
Oh, we've got eleven pages, yeah, we got plenty.
Okay, um, great, let's do a break, but let's do a shorter one, just so we can keep rocking and, uh, I don't know, five minutes?
Yep, five minutes it is, guys, we'll be right back in five minutes, answer more questions and this is going to be about future stuff. All right, guys, we'll be right back. All right, guys, and we are back, welcome to everyone out there. My name is Phil, I'm hanging out with Darren as well as Russ Balak and we are doing the town hall meeting for those that aren't here or haven't been here, I should say. Uh, Russ is the president of Piranha Games, answering questions directly from you guys. And for the past two hours, he's been answering mainly stuff about the past of development. Now we're going to go ahead and move on into the future, got a lot of questions to ask, so we're going to try to move through this as quickly as possible. Russ, are you ready?
Ready.
All right, so obviously lots of questions are being asked recently. Posted up, uh, a quirk system tier list and we've got a ton of questions about that. Clan and IS balance and obviously this being a big part of it, so let's go ahead and jump in here. Do not have a, uh, person, uh, I would give credit to, but, uh, the question is, if the IS mech quirks are being updated to balance them against the clans's, shouldn't T1 clans's be the target instead of T1 IS? Or are the T1 IS mechs considered beyond par with best clan mechs?
Well, they're not taken in consideration, um, necessarily, you know, with the clan mechs of saying, hey, as long as we do this change to, uh, you know, a dragon, it's going to compete with timberwolves. You know, there are going to be limitations, right? I mean, not every mech will ever be equal, I don't think. Someone asked us in the forums, I think it was a good question. It's, they asked like, hey, is the goal to basically make everything a tier-one mech? Well, I don't think that's the goal because I don't think it's feasible. I mean, certain mechs have certain designs. Sure, I suppose you could make an awesome a tier-one mech if you made it so the PPCs don't generate any heat and they do thirty damage each or something, right? Sure, tier-one mech. We won't be going that far, uh, but also I think the plan right now is we're keeping our eye on the ball, which is like Community Warfare is coming very soon and, see, I didn't say in a few short months, so I said very soon.
See what you did there.
And, um, you know, that's, uh, we have to have Intersphere versus clans's. And I know there was a question, ten v twelve, we can go back over that subject again, um, if you want, but with that in mind that we have this competition coming up in Community Warfare between, uh, clan and intersphere, what we're really focusing on is, uh, making the, the balance work, you know, make it so that if you have equal skill players per side, um, and you give them equal tonnage restrictions, that you've got, you know, that the better team, you know, who played better and had the best match and strategized the best, will win. And not giving too much an advantage, uh, one way or the other to, you know, purely technology. So that's an obvious statement, it's just, that's our goal. So that's why the intersphere quirk system, I think the quirk system is going to be used across the board. And I think even this first initial full pass on intersphere quirks is almost just the beginning. Like even since we've created all the quirks and we've plugged them into the game, we've added more. Now we've got the ability to do things even differently than we had then, the families of weapons and more quirks. So it'll be a living, breathing, growing thing that'll constantly evolve. And, yeah, it will be another one of those things that we'll have to tweak to achieve balance. So, uh, people should just be aware of that, meaning if all of a sudden, a month in, we say, you know what? We shouldn't have given the awesome this much of a quirk in that area, we'll have to tone it down. So everyone hates a nerf, but, um, there could be no nerfs if there weren't buffs to begin with, I guess. So there's, it is across the board going to be a buff for intersphere mechs, especially if they follow the criteria that's set out. And I think I want to talk about that for a minute, we can get some of the sort of general tone inside of the chat, maybe you guys could gather some of that up, but there's obviously going to be a lot of opinions about what tiers the mechs are in and whatnot. Although I view that as probably a smaller, um, concern because, you know, at most, you know, we basically have people saying, well, jeez, you know, my, are you sure that, you know, the dragon fang, fang, or not fang, but the flame is really a tier-three that really ought to be tier-four? So it might not get quite as many quirks as they might want to get in the beginning. But either way, they're getting buffed up. And there has been some conversation about, you know, the way I'd hint at it and say, you know, why are you doing it that way? So let's throw a little bit more of that information out here in the, in the podcast so people know. And there's lots of discussion about this going on still, you know, even internally at Piranha, between myself and some of the designers and, uh, myself and, um, others, some members of the community that have been helping us and, and working with us to define these, um, quirks and, and tiers, uh, just about exactly how they work. The goal is to, uh, one, bring up the viability of, of all the mechs. So there's much more consistency and viability across all of them. Some are maybe always going to be strong, they're just strong based on the combination of the model, shape and size, hard points, maneuverability, just, you know, some things just make really good mechs. So, and you look at the dragons as an example, I'm just going to bring them up because everyone knows I like a dragon and I want to see them be better. Are they going to be better than timberwolves? No, they're not, but they're going to be better. And for instance, we're going to make them, the quirks do get quite specific. When we first did a quirk pass, it was very generic. It was like, okay, this is a tier-five mech, so the rubric we've established is like, essentially buff like five categories of weapons, so like, buff everything. So we basically buff every weapon across every variant to the dragon. And it was like, okay, great, that's going to be effective at pushing the dragon up in tiers, but it's also going to continue to make every dragon kind of the same as every other dragon. And this is, the intersphere quirks represent a great opportunity for us to not just increase the viability of all the lower-tier intersphere mechs, but to also do a better job at giving them more specific roles. So we can really see it as playing into World Warfare. And it is true that not every single mech is going to have quirks that you particularly agree with or you say, well, that's not how I run my dragon five N, you know, for instance. And some of our quirks even go against some things we've done in the past, you know, look at the original dragon champion mech, which was one of our first champions, or I think the first one, it was actually, uh, you, uh, you guys voted on it. Two large lasers and a gals. Well, that represents kind of a different era, right, of the game. But it is what it is and it still can be a good mech if it's used the right way. But for instance, the five N was given quirks more along the lines of AC twos. Now, I don't use AC twos with dragon five N's in the past, but I understand why it might be a best way to play the mech. All the dragons are basically tier-five support mechs, so with that in mind, you, we buff particular things and we say, really, if you look at the, the mech and the shape and size of it and the hard points it has, its best chance of being viable or being as effective as possible. And usually there's a particular path that is kind of obvious that players have gravitated to over the years for those mechs. So since it has, you know, three hard point, ballistic hard points in the right arm, it's made more about the AC two. So you got some very specific AC two buffs where you could see people running two or three AC twos and those buffs for the AC two are quite significant. Um, and there's also less significant generic buffs to, um, energy weapons. And so if you took out a build of that type, the dragon five N can be as effective as possible. And so it pushes it up the tier list as much as you can while also keeping it unique. So, and give another example, the, of course, the flame, um, is about the AC twenty. So the quirks are all about the AC20 and the energy medium lasers. In particular, like say with Yan Lo Wang, of course, it's about the AC20 and medium pulse lasers. There's really a couple builds people use of that. I know, because I use Yan Lo Wang's a lot. If you deck it out with Endol Steel and Ferro Fibrous, you can either go AC20 with 2 medium pulses, or you end up going with like 2 ultra AC5s and a couple regular medium lasers, or sorry, even like an ER Large in that case. So there's kind of a flavor thing there, but of course Yan Lo Wang is about the AC20, right, for all the right reasons. So that one becomes, you get significant AC20 buffs along with medium pulse buffs. And so, yes, you, if you want to be as effective as possible, you will need to use it in that vein. But it's important for everyone to remember, say, "Hey, I don't run my Yan Lo Wang that way." Well, you're not gonna be penalized in any way, shape, or form. It's not like there's any negative buffs whatsoever being introduced, so it's still, everybody's effective as it was in the past. In fact, it's still gonna be more effective, because you're going to have, say for instance, the buffs for the Yan Lo Wang in particular, we've gone much further with the left arm as far as the armor and internal structures on it that you get with that shield. And we've even given some in the case of Yan Lo Wang to the right arm. I think just internals in that case, because it relies so much upon that right arm. So in the end, you're up with buffs to both arms, but armor, you get armor to the left arm, but internals to both. So you're still gonna get those buffs, right? And if you run medium pulses, whatever, you're still gonna get those buffs. So you are going to end up, even if you don't wanna run Yan Lo Wang kind of the way that quirks say it's best or kind of meant to be run, you're still gonna end up being, in almost all cases with these mechs, better off than you are today. But it's just that if you really wanna take a Yan Lo Wang from, what, tier 4, and have it compete with tier 1, you know, or, you know, the 55-ton Shadow Hawks that are like tier 2 right now, when they get a quirk, they're gonna be, you know, even pushing into tier 1 category. You wanna compete with those Shadow Hawks and those, you know, tier 2, tier 1, medium mechs. The only way to really do that is to play that Yan Lo Wang with, that takes best advantage of those quirks. So that's the gist of it. I know some of the things that people will be looking for are, yeah, the victors got their negative quirks flushed. We're considering them tier 1 mechs again, once they're flushed, so you won't see additional weapon quirks up the gate. This can all change, but that's how it's gonna go out. So we think those are gonna return to tier 1 status really quickly. What else would be of interest? I think the Awesome quirks that we already did, which did help, a lot of people commented how much, you know, better they are. That's flushed out for new ones. This time, we've gone with CT, LT, and RT buffs, internals across the board, and we've gone a little further than we did in the past. That, and they're very, this is where the, you know, the variant-specific stuff, I think, is gonna be very appreciated. Obviously, the 8Q is very much about PPC, so it's significant PPC-specific PPC buffs, not just general energy buffs. And then, you know, 18, some of the others are gonna be more about LRM's or LRM-15s. Going down to Pretty Baby, it's gonna be some generic missile buffs. I'm just kinda going off memory here, because I've spent a lot of time in the document, and some large laser buffs. So that kind of makes sense per variant, I think, as you're seeing, Locust. This is really interesting. I think, obviously, it's gonna sound like a lot, but you know how all the light mechs had like 5% internals before? That was really just a test case. That's been flushed. So in the case of the Locust, we're talking 100% internals. And everyone says, "Holy crap, 100%?" Well, you know, that's, what is it, 12 hit points on a leg? And there's like 6 internals, so, I think maybe it's 8 internal, so if I remember correctly, so basically another 8 hit points. So it's not a lot, but you can imagine that it's less, more than 5%. 5% probably didn't even give us a hit point before. So, you know, 100% internals, and you got some arms stuff going on. And then you get into specific weapons. I believe the 1A is all about small lasers, as you might imagine. Significant buffs to range in particular. So, you know, it might be reaching out even approaching medium laser ranges, but with smalls, and it makes sense. And it's just about that particular mech, so it's not like, "Oh my goodness, we have to learn a whole new rule for small lasers." No, only when you see a Locust, you might start wondering that it's, you know, it could be, you know, running 6 small lasers, and, you know, you can all imagine that with those buffs, with the armor and the legs and all that, with the, in that case of the 1E, you got the small lasers and stuff. It's still gonna be a 20-ton mech. It's not gonna go out there and brawl head-to-head with Jenners or anything like that, but I think you could all imagine how it would step up its usefulness on the battlefield quite significantly. And the 1V, the Phoenix Prime variant, is gonna be, you know, a small buff to the machine guns, but a lot of focus on running, you know, a single ER Large to poke out from distance. So we tried to look at each one and say, "You could buff the heck out of those machine guns." You know, it's, it might not do it, you know, you're gonna get up close on that Locust, it's not gonna go well. So I'm pretty happy. I'm like 90% happy with the way it is right now. We have some concerns and some questions, and, you know, there's been a lot of feedback. "Well, that's not how I run my build," and we're trying to, you know, consider that, but also consider the goals in play here and try to make the variants as unique from each other as possible. So it's sort of like, you wanna run the AC10 Hunchback, you know, you really should be taking up the 4H. And I think that's interesting and more interesting to our players in the end. But we just got it plugged in. The numbers are plugged in now. I didn't get a build today to test. Hoping to get one tomorrow. I'd like to get this into QA's hands by Wednesday next week for a full 2-week test run. And if all goes really well, then it can make that October 21st patch. But as you know in my post, I said October 21st or November 4th, so it is a possibility it could slip into another one. If, if there's just a lot of feedback, if it's just like, "Well, we really just can't go that far with, you know, the AC10 buff on the fang, so we're gonna have to tweak that or something." So, you know, it still has to go through the process. I look forward to getting your hands. I think it's gonna make a significant impact, not just to the viability of those mechs, but into our, you know, there's a part of this that just plays into World Warfare now. It's an added benefit and bonus to World Warfare that I really wasn't expecting.
Okay, Russ, obviously a lot of hype going on in chat. I literally saw some comments that I don't know if they were PG or rated. About, really excited, so some questions that sort of came out. You mentioned rubric. You mentioned, you know, obviously, this is affecting every single chassis. You know, what is that rubric you're talking about? And then also, what kind of impact do you think this is gonna have on the game?
Well, this could change, okay? So it's not my broken promise if I change it. But we did wanna have a rule in place, and this is a lot of credit and help to particular community members. I'm just not mentioning them specifically, because everyone then says, you know, "Why'd you listen to those people and not these people?" So we've been listening to some people. They've been a great help, in particular around the tier list. I mean, I think we agree that that's one area that we wouldn't, we wouldn't really be able to come up with on our own. You know, we're not part of the competitive teams. We have a lot of trust towards the competitive players, and even just the better players play our game a lot. Really understanding exactly what tier these mechs are in much better than we do. Beyond that, the rule in place at the moment is essentially, depending what tier you are, that's kind of tier you are, that defines how many weapon quirks you're going to get. So the armor quirks, if we gave the mech any armor or internals, those are on top of the 5. There's a few other cases, like movement quirks. A Locust also has an acceleration quirk buff I didn't mention. Acceleration into acceleration, I think those also, there's a few other categories that we said, well, those aren't the 5 either. The 5 are around the weapons. Define the mechs into support brawler or skirmisher type roles. And then, so then, if you have, for instance, I don't know, what's the, I'm gonna probably get this wrong, but I have a doc open right here, actually. Let me get there. I'm gonna just go down to the beginning of the list. Alright, so I mentioned the Locust 1V, right, the Prime variant. So tier 5, as you guys know, I've shared that list with you. Left leg, right leg, 100% structure, right arm, left arm, 50% armor, armor not structure. And then we've got 5 energy, or 5 weapon, sorry, movement acceleration and just acceleration, 25%, deceleration 50%. And then you got the 5 weapon ones. And we have ballistic weapon range buff. I'm not gonna list the percentages for you guys right now, because that's the thing that's probably the most likely to change, like the actual percentage on the buff. Energy weapon range. So that's obviously across all energy weapons, and you have weapon-specific ER Large duration and ER Large cooldown. And I've only listed up 4 there, because of the ER Large cooldown in this particular case, which is one of those things we're exploring. It's actually a double usage in this case. So basically, the tier 5 amount that we give a mech times 2. So it's a pretty significant cooldown buff on the ER Large, as well as a duration of the beam. And then there's a general energy weapon range and a general ballistic weapon range. So you can start to imagine this Locust being able to reach out pretty far, you know, approaching, approaching, you know, even like approaching clan large laser ranges with buffs to duration and cooldown as well. It sounds extreme, and believe everyone at the office, including myself, at first, has massive trepidation, like, "Oh my goodness." Then you realize, okay, it's a Locust 1V, so yep, he's gonna be out there with his 1 large laser, picking away at people, but it's just for this mech, you know, these. So one part I skipped there, so basically, obviously, tier 5 has 5 weapon buffs, but tier 5, say ER Large cooldown is a much higher percentage than, say, tier 2 ER Large cooldown. So I think you guys understand, that's enough information to get a picture of how it plays out. And this is an initial pass. Like I said, I think it's gonna be pretty cool, it's gonna be really effective. It's gonna go through some tweaking here in the next couple weeks, almost certainly. But then, don't view that as like locked in stone, be all end all. The Quirk System's gonna continue to grow. We might come in here and add all sorts of things. We might end up taking away one that's a weapon-specific buff and giving it maybe a generic one, if we say that maybe in some cases are determinations on exactly how a mech should be played. For some, it's gonna be kind of like obvious. There's just mechs out there that's sort of like, "Well, jeez, if you want this to be viable, you end up with this build." So those quirk runs on those mechs are probably gonna end up being very, very accurate. There's some other mechs that are a little more gray, and we might end up then in some cases saying, "Well, let's take out this one weapon-specific buff and put more of a generic family of those weapons, you know, buff in there instead, and that way, you know, it'll still stack with this one, and so it'll still give the end effect that we wanted, but can be used a little more generally in some other cases." So it's probably gonna be a mech-by-mech basis a little bit still. You can come up with a rubric and a rule set, and I think those go a long ways, and they go towards achieving the vast majority of the workload that it takes to put quirks on like 100 mechs. But there are gonna be cases where we just have to modify on a mech-per-mech basis.
Well, that is a lot of good info. You have another follow-up?
No, I was just gonna say, if you're reading Twitch chat, I don't think I actually saw any negatives in that entire time you were talking about the Locust. So I think that shows how positive and how, I guess, excited everyone is about that.
Well-received. Yeah, I mean, I think we could do probably a 2 or 3-hour meeting just on that feature alone. It's got a lot of people talking, a lot of people excited about the possibilities. But I'm gonna move on to the next question. If we have any other follow-ups on the Quirk System, we'll, you know, obviously try and get them in. This next question is from Stallman. He asks, "Is there any chance we'll get a save loadout option and a way to load those saved loadouts?"
Yeah, I don't really have an answer on that. That's a question that goes back to the first hours of MechWarrior, you know, online development. I don't have a specific reason as to why it's not there, other than, you know, it just never got the development time. I mean, I think there was some, there was always some question of, you know, whether or not, you know, you should allow people to save out mech configurations really quickly. There's definitely at least a little bit of a business case there for saying, "Hey dude, you know, you gotta run 4 different Centurion 9Ds, you know, in combat, you know, and especially in the beginning, when talking about Community Warfare." Then, and you run 4 different builds that you run all the time? Well, you need to, you know, go get 4 Centurion 9Ds and build out all 4 the way you like them, and that kind of played more into, you know, I guess, both, I don't know, more of a business case sense, I guess, in this regard. But it wasn't like, "Hey, we can easily turn this on, let's do this," and then we said, "No, business case, let's get people to buy more mechs." It really never got to that point. There was always that thought process of like, "Well, there's kind of a business case to be made here for, you know, buy mech base, buy your mechs, own multiple mechs if you like to run different builds." But again, it never, that business, that potential business case never got to a point where it kind of stopped development of the feature or anything. But it might be fair to say, because there was that lingering thought process on the business case, that, you know, maybe we never pushed a feature like that to the top of the list. You know, there's always plenty of other UI needs and demands out there that we never felt like we had to jump on that feature straight away.
Next question we have is from Tracif. I think I got that right. "When will monthly IS mechs come back?"
Very good question, and it's a question that I feel like I'm not fully prepared to answer, just because I think we're in, we're in the middle of something here. You know, there's a lot changing right now, you know? We, in the past, you know, a lot of things were decided based on our relationship with IGP and our relationship with, which was directly related to what we call ODF, or Ongoing Development Funds, that we agreed upon together, and how much of those funds went towards creating mechs, hero mechs, and the various things. In the last couple months of our relationship with them, that started to change dramatically. There wasn't really any, well, there wasn't really any funding for anything in the last couple months. So things really got kind of messed up. But I think there's also, you know, an evolving business plan in, you know, the industry and free-to-play games. And I look at, you know, other games in the marketplace and stuff. And one thing I'll say, though, is that MechOnline will always be free-to-play in the sense that every single mech, you know, every single type of mech, chassis, I mean, might be the best way to say it, will always be available for free in the game. For C-bills, at some particular point, you know what, at times, we've reserved things, like for instance, I don't know yet when I'm gonna allow the, maybe the Centurion and the Atlas reward mechs to be sold for C-bills. So there's some special cases like that, but all the mechs, if you look at the Mad Dog, it's gonna be available in December. Wave 1 mech, I think on Tuesday, we had our 5th one for C-bills. So we're getting pretty close to, you know, those all being released. Wave 2, you already know the schedule. But I'm seeing so much of our time and modeling time is used on creating the mech packs, which in the end are a significantly better way for us to release mechs into the game for a lot of reasons, not the least of which, of course, is the business case of funding MechWarrior Online. I don't mind being straight, honest with you. So there's, it's an ongoing discussion right now, and there's definitely a chance that I think that the mech pack type of mentality is going to be the way that the vast majority, if not all, the way that all of our mechs initially get released into the game. And then they'll always be available for free for players that, you know, don't wanna purchase the packs. That's perfectly fine. In free-to-play games, it's always been an acceptable trade-off, of course, between time and money. That will never change with MechWarrior Online. So take my answer today with a grain of salt, in that we are only a month into our relationship without IGP in establishing, you know, a business model that works, and works for MechWarrior and works for our players. And, you know, we've got you know, we've got so many, all of our art resources, you know, on Wave two, on future IS releases that, that to answer your question, I think eventually in the not too distant future, if you looked at, you know, Wave one and how that's going to feed into Wave two of Clan mechs, there's going to be a small gap there in the month of November, I think, based on when we announced Wave two, but essentially you establish a pacing that will see, you know, a mech being released for C bills basically every month, if not every two weeks. You know, like we've seen with the Clan mechs here recently. So when Wave one's done, basically Wave two will start fitting into that. And if we have an Inner Sphere mech pack coming up for those players that want to qualify for the King Crab and just for our next Inner Sphere mechs in general, the free versions of those mechs will line up with, you know, after Wave two. So eventually you do consider, you know, you do establish, I should say, excuse me, a cadence of like, you know, a free chassis. Excuse me, a free chassis hitting the market, maybe even twice a month.
So a question on regards of this and a follow up, there's, you know, obviously discussion in the chat and we've, we've got another question, but you know, have you guys considered releasing them a little bit sooner as far as for the C bill? And obviously what I'm seeing in chat too, a few people have said is if it's not available for, you know, C bills, then it could be contrived as pay to win. You know, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, it really is only dependent on the mech, you know, and there's certainly been some discussion about that with Wave one, but I almost view that as kind of a growing pains thing where, you know, for very important reasons, including both business reasons and for respect of those players that spent, you know, the significant money on, you know, our mech packs as they did. That there was really, we felt the pressure to make sure that they, you know, got to play with those mechs for you know, a decent amount of time, you know, exclusively. But I think the growing pains part, I think, comes from the fact that when the Wave one mechs, when people were waiting for the Wave one mechs to become available for C bills, there wasn't any Clan mechs available to play for free yet. But I think that's a problem that really doesn't exist moving forward though, right? Because now we have one of every weight class, including Summoner, Dire Wolf and you know, within the month of October, we're going to see the Mad Cat and everything. So it's not really a problem that exists moving forward. I don't know that we can say, hey, the Gargoyle isn't available to play for free for a couple more months. So it's pay to win because well, you can play with the Timber Wolf and the Dire Wolf, right? Two of potentially the best, you can buy those for C bills. They're the best C bill mechs in the game or the best Clan mechs in the game. So I think we had a bit of a couple of month gap there where people could say, well, I'm not really sure I like this. Because I can't play Clan mechs if I didn't spend money. But now that we've gotten to this point and we've got four plus release for C bills and another one becomes available over two weeks, I don't think that's really a problem that we have anymore.
The only reason I think this is brought up is obviously people are saying in chat and I've read is that, you know, if there's an equivalent mech out there that can perform equal, if not, you know, better, then obviously then it's not paid to win. But a lot of people are referencing the Timber Wolf being so dominant and being the best mech in the game. That is where that came from.
That's, that's fair. I want to jump on that. I think again, we're almost there. I think we're looking at about a month, I think, right until the Timber Wolf hits for free release. And then really from that point forward, I don't think we'll have this problem anymore. There'll be plenty of mechs of all caliber. And remember, you know, at this point, and we're going to do the Inner Sphere quirks, that's gonna make a lot of mechs a lot more viable. The Victor again is going to take on tier one status. Totally free mech, right? So I don't know how many mechs are in the game now. Someone can tell me, unique chassis, and when you take the variance into account, there must be lots, lots and lots and lots and lots and lots and lots and they're all free. So give it another month and even the Timber Wolf will be for free. And then it's really not a problem moving forward. And then it's just like, hey, if you support MechWarrior and you buy these packages, thank you so much. Appreciate it. It's, you know, we only, we're only here and making MechWarrior and, you know, making Community Warfare and everything else because people are buying those packages and and I think it's okay for them to experience those mechs for an exclusive period of time for their support and especially, you know, so long as there's mechs available that people can compete with. So again, with the quirk system and Victor's hitting tier one status and all the free mechs out there and just being a, you got the Dire Wolf now. And Timber Wolf in a few weeks, then it's a problem we had there for a little while, a little bit of an uncomfortable spot for a couple of months, but I think we're, we're almost through that now.
All right. I knew there'd be some questions about ECM and there were. I'm going to kind of combine them. We had some questions from Jake Perrell and Eloca, I think. Basically, is there a reason ECM was not put into the game similar to the way that it is in tabletop? And maybe opposite of how it works in real life? I can't confirm or deny that. And then also, is there any plans to relook at, reexamine ECM, BAP, et cetera?
Well, I think most people know that there we're open to and there are plans to look at all of it, look at everything. I know some people in chat were asking about the Player Council thing. All I want to say for now is that the plan was to make sure we had this town hall. And if we feel like we've gotten through enough of it tonight, then maybe there won't be any more. But I still thought there might be room for at least one more to talk more specifically about some of these things. We talked pretty specifically about heat scale. So I think, you know, that's kind of open for discussion now. Everyone understands kind of what it was used to accomplish. And so we could have that conversation. Obviously, we talked about third person view. I think we established that one. It's just really more of a piss off thing than it is really a feature that's significant. But that kind of leaves things like ECM left to be discussed. I won't go into it here tonight. The answer is yes, we're open to reviewing it. I've said even, I don't, I don't love it. I don't hate it, hate it, hate it, because I think it does offer something unique and something I guess more significant than other past games in MechWarrior, I always felt were, just didn't really have anything that, you know, meant anything, at least certainly to me anyhow. And so the only thing I don't necessarily like is the the notion of creating a bubble around such a large area. I think I could live with the absolute radar shield aspect of it in smaller doses. So, you know, one tiny idea that's been floated around a bit by a lot of people and I've thought of it myself at one point was you know, having the bubble based on your speed, you know, if you're a spider and you want to actually shield a hundred and eighty meter bubble or whatever it is, it to be standing still, you know, amongst your heavies and assaults and stuff. If you go running along a hundred and fifty kilometers an hour, you might only be bubble shielding yourself. Yourself alone. And, you know, maybe there's slower speeds that create medium sized bubbles. If you move along at Atlas speed, you can kind of create a eighty meter bubble. I don't know. Your initial thoughts, everyone's got some. I think we just want to approach the question cautiously because as we saw in the forums, it's no doubt it's one of the, it's a hot topic, a lot of strong opinions around it, but it was not a runaway, you know, slam dunk in the forums like this has got to go. There was plenty of people saying that and there was plenty of people starting their own polls saying, leave it alone. It's fine. And a lot of people kind of understanding that it was dreadful in the beginning, super OP. And by the time we got finished with all of our design and countermeasures, which should have all gone out at the same time, it was okay, you know, it was livable, bearable and even by some people's accounts, maybe fine or decent now at this point. So I'm sure there's lots of strong opinions popping up in chat now. I'm not looking at it at the moment, but it's one of those subjects. So it's it's open for discussion. But I think as some people suggest that I'm looking to get a voting capability put into the launcher. We've got just a small fraction of our players that come to the forums that have a strong opinion. You know, that's, there's a town hall meeting right there in and of itself. So I think when we start looking at opening something up for discussion and trying to possibly put together some type of Player Council type thing, some people are asking about the schedule on that. Well, again, it was about the town halls. Maybe we have another one first, maybe not. I wanted to get through these town halls, give everyone some perspective. And the team's 100% busy on Community Warfare anyhow. So if we had a perfect design tomorrow for Heat Scale, you know, or the new, you know, new version of it or ECM for that matter. Not going to get anyone to work on it for a month or two anyhow. They're busy. They're all tied up. So we have some time. Small changes, like I mentioned around the bubble shrinking or something. Yeah, you could do, we can do tweaks probably. You can find a way to put tweaks in, in the shorter term. But if restructuring, you know, the whole thing, that's going to take some time. We're going to have to wait for the guys to come off of Community Warfare. So I thought there was some time now to have some town halls. Then start opening up some discussions, gathering the input and then by the time they're free, we'll have, we'll, you know, have some things to work on. We'll have some direction. But I also started thinking that it probably may not be the best idea to start out with something like ECM, which is as you saw, quickly degraded into like, well, actually radar should work totally different and everything should work different, you know, everything that touches the information warfare. It's a big, it can open up to a massive conversation. So softballs maybe at first. Obviously, third person view is a softball. If it's like, in what form can it exist or should it exist or what should we do with it? Armlock, I'm not really sure what the reaction was in chat about that, if they liked limiting it, you know, to new players. Those are some easier things. Heat scale, it's harder, much harder, but it's still easier than ECM, in my opinion. But anyhow, that's hopefully, that's about as good of an answer as I can throw out at this moment.
Now to sort of comment, I've been reading chat and obviously not to continue the ECM discussion, but I think a lot of the the comments are, it's not necessarily about ECM. It's more or less the information warfare in general and how mechs share info and how they pass them along, how it's blocked and then how weapons are also used in gameplay. I think that sort of all comes into the giant, you know, category that is information warfare. So it's not just about ECM. It's about all of that. And I guess that'll be on the next town hall. I do have two questions. One's by DHB Bleeker and the other one's by Wonderwell. And basically they revolve around the any comment on the upcoming potential IS pack that you mentioned and also would be possible to see some of the concept art for those? You mentioned possibly December timeframe for that and obviously why you're doing it. There's been a lot of negative, oh, you know, it's just, you know, just jumping on board the, you know, bad wagon of just grabbing sales and blah, blah, blah. But actually you were doing it in response of something.
Well, yeah, I was doing it in response of something, you know, there was a significant number of players that said, I want to qualify for the King Crab. I don't want to buy a Clan package. You're not, they're not Clan players. But, you know, that's great. And I'm definitely reacting to player request to a large degree, but that's not it. That's not all it is, obviously. I mean, it's it's definitely, what's, it's the, this is, this is the number one way MechWarrior Online makes its revenue. So I think it's a growing business model for MechWarrior Online and I am absolutely 100% AOK with anyone out there who wants to be concerned or unimpressed by mech packs and says, I don't want to buy any more mech packs. We have enough mech packs. Make maps, make Community Warfare, you know, until I see such and such features or changes ECM or changes to this or that or whatever. I'm not going to buy any more mech packs. That's absolutely fine. I'm just saying, yes, I am reacting to player feedback, but also I'm not completely going to hide behind that. This is a significant business model for MechWarrior Online. And I mean, look at every game. It's like Star System sells you ships. Everyone sells you something and it becomes that for a reason. Mechs are easy to sell. You know, you can't sell maps. You can't sell certain content that everyone needs to have on their client and load up when a map kicks off a match, right? So some things just naturally that the player owns, skins, mechs, et cetera, naturally fit that category way better than anything else. It's our vehicles, right? It's our tanks. It's our ships. And that's just the way it is. And it's a growing business model. It's, it's it's, you know, think of it in the future of there will be more packs. There'll be packs and packs and packs and packs. And you know, as long as there is mechs, you know, there'll be packs just like another game. So I'm absolutely fine with players voting with their wallet. I appreciate that and I respect that. People will say, I won't buy another mech pack until Community Warfare Planetary Conquest is out. Fair enough. I won't buy another mech pack until some criteria that is important to you is met. And that's totally perfect. I respect that and we'll be listening to feedback and obviously it's our job to try and fix, recover, change, deal with as many of those things as possible so that we have as large a customer base as possible. So yes, here we go. I'm excited about it. We haven't done an Inner Sphere mech pack in a long time. I actually am hoping to get it out relatively soon. Yes, the absolute deadline would be December 16th before the King Crab is available. But you know, with the way that things are now with the packs, we're able to get mechs out sooner than the actual end date, you know, as you've seen with Wave two. There was the Mad Dog, of course, who qualified. It's available right now. But if you just bought the other various Wave two mechs, the first ones are going to start coming available, memory serves, in November. So first in November-ish is the first one. Then one towards the middle of November. And then you have one on the first December and the middle of December. So the mechs are starting to achieve a better cadence of coming out. So with that in mind, if we start a mech, Inner Sphere mech pack and allow people to purchase that here and in a month-ish, late October, early November. And, you know, we might still have the possibility of seeing the first of those. Not only would they qualify the King Crab in December 16th, which is great, if they bought the, you know, top aspect of it, but then the other mechs will start to come out as early as, you know, let's say, you know, mid-January or something. So just, you know, within a month of the Wave two pack being released, some of these new Inner Sphere mechs start coming out. So there's a couple of reasons to, you know, jump on this right away. I have been doing some polls. There are limitations to the polls. So when I did an assault mech poll, there were people saying, why not the Mauler? Why not? What was it? Devastator? I don't know. There was a few others, right? About three others that got, you know, quite a few kind of write in votes. I'm not ignoring you. I'm not saying those are lame. It's one of these three because I'm, you know, because I say so. There is logic behind it. There is in most cases, it's because we have the concept artwork finished already, along with the orthals, ornate drawing, so for the modelers to use. And, you know, in some cases timeline, in another cases, technology bases of what the mechs hold and the number of variants that are available. So when it came to the assault, those are the three options that I already had concepted and fit all the criteria that I just listed. Cyclops and the Zeus are very close. Zeus won by just like a percent. I'm going to forego throwing out, you know, what the decisions are for now because I want to be sure, but I also still like surprising you guys. Sorry. I mean, when Wave two mech come out, I want, a lot of you guys guessed it right or guessed it mostly, right? It's still exciting to boom, announce it and have you guys see what they are. So I'm sorry, I'm going to hang on to that for now. But obviously, you know what the options are here because I'm telling you what they were with the polls. The heavy mech poll, very interesting. I thought the Black Knight would win and it probably will. Both cool. All I can tell you is I've seen the grasshopper concept though of Alex's and it looks awesome.
Confirmed, confirmed awesome.
You've seen it? Yeah, it looks wicked. Black Knight he's doing right now. And I had him start drawing that right away because I knew there'd be a popular mech. So and then on the medium and the light, I don't think I'll be putting polls up for them because I've got to, what I view are kind of grand slam choices and they fit that I've got two, what I view are kind of grand slam choices, and they fit that criteria I listed out too, so, it's harder for me to throw out options, the light in particular, I think, is a home run, uh, the medium is close to it, when I look at the other ones I had available as candidates. Um, so, yeah, I think we're, we're getting really close to being decided on that. And we will, you know, announce that and put that up there, and, and we will look forward to you guys, um, voting with your wallet, you know, you say, awesome, Inner Sphere pack, here we go, or Russ, this looks great, um, I'll be sure to buy that when, um, you know, and play in Planetary Assault. That's fair.
All right, got a follow-up, uh, question for you, Russ, and sort of ties into, uh, the questions, uh, before of, well, I don't want to buy a mech, uh, you know, mech pack until this, you know, comes in a game, and, and I want to buy a mech pack. Has PGI ever thought about including goals, saying, hey, if we sell enough of, for instance, this Wave 2 IS, uh, uh, pack, that, you know, in return, we'll knock out two maps, and here's the date for those maps, or here, you know, have you guys ever thought about that, including it as a grand goal as well, saying, hey, we understand that you guys want mechs and maps, and we understand that you want both in the same time, if one does well, the other does equally well. Have you guys ever thought about that?
Well, it's an interesting concept, um, actually brings up a really interesting point to kind of bring up, and that is, maybe, you know, I don't know if, some of our players might realize this, maybe some won't, based on past conversations and whatnot, is that MechWar Online obviously relies on its customers, just like any game does, of course. But we've never actually crowdfunded anything, you know, I mean, even founders, it was, it was about, we, we described to everybody what the game was, and we described what the four pillars of the game were. But the founders' packages themselves, we said, here's what you'll get. You know, if you give us $120 of money for a legendary pack, we're gonna give you like, I forget now, it was a lot, it was how much in MC? More than 120, it was, you know, so we can give, give you all this MC and these Form X, and this is what you're gonna get for the legendary package, and when the time came, we delivered, you know, the contents of that package to people. Um, it wasn't until a little bit later when, well, I think there was some poor communication by Piranha at the time, um, and basically making sure that we communicated that, look, this is, we're not necessarily crowdfunding any features. But I remember when, um, it was actually IGP, they were out looking for, um, I think they were looking for some investment at the time or something, and they put out like a press release, kind of, you know, um, pounding their chest about the, uh, success of the founders program. At the time, that was really exceptional, you know, that was, uh, kind of, I, I think, sort of a record, unofficial record in a way, prior to, you know, Star System or anything, because but at the same time, we really can't count as a record from our perspective at Piranha, we didn't crowdfund anything, we sold mechs, right? But they had actually used the term crowdfunding in their press release, which we were kind of pissed about, and there was a bit of a falling out um, between PGI and IGP at that moment about that press release that we had nothing to do with and didn't, didn't even know was coming out. And I think if I remember correctly, even in the forums at the time, it was sort of like, hey, we're crowdfunding this game, what's up? You know, where's all this stuff? So that was kind of a crappy situation, but to answer his question, we've never really crowdfunded anything before, we've sold packages of goods, um, pre-ordered packages essentially. And that's really what this is now too, with Wave 2 and any, you know, upcoming Inner Sphere mech pack. So, these kind of thoughts, though, they cross our minds all the time, of course, um, the challenge there, of, of course, is that it's not the same assets or, or staff that make the two, and so when you've got, let's say we, you know, if we achieved a certain amount, then yeah, I guess if you looked at it very much from a crowdfunding perspective, like, which is something we haven't done, uh, with MechWar yet, then you could, you know, if we hit, we hit this particular number, then, you know, we'll hire the staff it takes to, you know, uh, create mechs at a higher pace, or sorry, mechs, uh, maps at a higher pace, and to release those at a certain time. Um, haven't done that before, we haven't crowdfunded any features yet. Um, I will throw out some bits, uh, when it comes to the maps, though, uh, you have the Mining Collective now, I think it looks really good, fun map. Swamp map, it's looking good, I got serious with Dennis and the art director and those guys, you know, said, dude, I want this son bitch in test, um, uh, no later than this, uh, let me look at my calendar here really quick, I think you're on the 21st of October. Um, full-time into test, and usually patch, maps won't make, won't make it out in one cycle. But it does basically set a deadline of, uh, the second patch in November, so all in all, pretty good, only two months after the Mining Collective, right, we should have the Swamp map in our rotation as well. On top of that, the new map used for the Community Warfare game mode is looking great. Uh, we're gonna be playtesting it tomorrow with the new game mode, actually, um, generators, doors, the whole bit. Um, there might even be some dropship mode testing going on tomorrow. We've got a little over a week to our first sprint ending, which has a lot of exciting goals. But as to the map, we'll be playing that map with the new game mode. Won't have the four mech dropship functionality yet, but, um, that map is, is looking good, and it's, it represents a new uh, type of map, it's not, a, a little more about how we're, we're making maps moving forward, but in particular for um, Community Warfare map with this new game mode type, uh, because it's made for that specific attack defend game mode, we can create them quicker, we can create them much quicker for a few reasons, one, we've got all the asset sets, you know, everything from forest setting to alpine setting to swamp to, you know, all the different themes that you've seen our maps have made, but so we have all that now. And that's the way it's gonna be for regular maps post Swamp as well, as I've mentioned. So the turnaround time would be much quicker, uh, but we can also pull up some terrain maps and, and populate them with these asset sets, both for the new community warfare maps, as well as, um, you know, the regular cycle of maps. Uh, moving much quicker, and then I know people will talk about community content in the maps. Like I said, I promised I'd turn my attention to that after Swamp and the Community Warfare map are done, and I still will discuss it with you. Um, but there's a little bit of map information, so, you know, your idea on the crowdfunding thing is, is, is interesting. I don't know if it's maybe necessary at this point, now that we've finally got things corrected up on the, uh, the map side, I guess I would say, I don't, and I guess I should throw this out there, and I just, I just can't help myself, but we didn't make, the, the big hole was created that we released HPG around Christmas, right? And we basically, we didn't create any maps, we didn't work on maps at all between January, or sorry, between December-ish and June or July or, um, at some point in the summer. And that was based, um, 100% on the fact that at, at our December conversations with our publisher, they, um, no longer wanted to pay for map development, so uh, we were just unwilling, more out of stubbornness in this case, to take on the full burden when they were unwilling to see the value or to participate in this development, so um, that's why they stopped, that's, I, I blamed it on clan production in the past. It wasn't a lie, it was true, because all the staff that I did have making maps went on to mechs, and they started making the mechs, and that was our focus, but the truth is, our publisher just didn't want to support and pay, pay the money to make maps. Um, they weren't seeing the value in them, even though every time we released a map, we saw the value in our players, not only their reactions and positive comments, but in the, you know, the player counts online and just everything about a map that creates, um, you know, traffic on the game and on the server, so I understand right now, it feels like, how do we get maps going? I guess I'm just here to reassure, reassure you that they're going, you know, we got Mining Collective out, two months from Mining Collective, we'll have Swamp, and then we'll have another new map that we're experiencing with Community Warfare, and we're gonna pull up all the stops to make sure that we can get more than just the one for Community Warfare, uh, we could have, that we could have more than that, that one new one. So, map production is alive and well and moving along, so I'm not sure that we'll, you know, we'll look to, you know, do what the, the players suggested.
Russ, I do have a follow-up, and this is actually just personally from me, you mentioned dropship mode and all that. Uh, you guys have the original trailer of the Atlas being dropshipped out. Is this being tied in somehow, just even, you know, as far as you die, you respawn in your mech, but it, there's maybe an animation sequence of that, you know, awesome scene, is so is that too much to hope for, or is that something maybe you guys can grab, you know, grab for?
Well, yes and no, um, it is gonna come into play, but not to that extent, or at least I, I seriously doubt it, um, it's a really cool thought, but I don't think we're going to be loading another entire level that you're in, and then you drop, and then you load another level, or, you know, back into the level, or we'd have to, that doesn't work technically for the game, so you'd have to basically have both of, you know, the levels inside the same map space, but just in different corners, you know, there's ways to do it, but that is a little bit outside of the scope for this next phase, but the dropship will come into play. At least the current plan right now is, we've got the Leopard-class dropship, it looks great. Um, one little change from lore, though, I think, I think it'd be a change from lore, you'd have to tell me for sure, is our Leopard-class dropship has, uh, VTOL capabilities, and that was really kind of necessary for bringing mechs into combat, uh, when people are coming back in after they're destroyed, because didn't want to drop them off at like 2G's, you know, and Panther, or, uh, what do you call it, the Leopard-class dropship just goes flying by. So it's gonna come in VTOL style, this plan is currently, comes in VTOL style and drops mechs in, so you guys already know about the 30-second timer, so three of your teammates are dead, they're waiting, 30-second timer comes, they select the next mech they're going to play in Community Warfare, they hit launch, players will see dropship come flying in on a splined path, you know, hover, going to hover mode real quickly, and the mechs spawn and jump, you know, take leg damage, right, on the way down, no, no leg damage, I hope, we'll have to, we'll have to make sure they don't, but um, that was a joke we had in the boardroom the other day, but basically, it's gonna be cool, so I don't know for sure, the player that's spawning in, what they're gonna see yet, you know, if we're gonna be in the cockpit and dropping that last little blue to the ground, um,
Do it, do it now.
Or, or do you watch it all, you know, I don't know, third-person style, I just said the word, third-person. And, and, you know, you, the mechs fall to the ground, and then you, you're in it. So, but either way, so we have to finalize that perspective that the player will have during the process, but it's not like it's gonna be, I'm inside the dropship, I'm walking around the gantry, I walk over to mech, I get in, I da-da-da-da-da, you know, like I push buttons, and I, you know, play like a whole mini-game in there to like get to my next mech. It will be UI-driven, as far as like, I'm dead, there's a 30-second timer, I click that mech, let's go, and then you know, from one of your teammates that's still alive, they'll see the dropship fly in, and they'll see the mechs, you know, appear at the doorways, I suppose, and, and down they come. And if you're the guy who's coming back into the match, I'm not positive yet, but I'm thinking you'll see, you'll probably just be in the cockpit, and you'll, you know, start your mech up, and then you'll do a little hop down to the ground or something. So, it's in my head right now, because the dropships is done, the map's just done, the game mode's just done, and they still have to get the dropship to do those things, so, um, we've got some stretch goals, I've, I'm hoping we can get the, uh, dropship to have some weapons, I want to have it so that you, if you're kind of dominating the enemy team, I don't want to see you rushing up and crowding around the dropships, trying to, you know, spawn, camp them. Um, there might be turrets at play around this areas where the dropships come in, much more mean style than you were used to. And you might be taking, you know, super accurate insta-hit PPC hits or something, I don't know, uh, from the dropship itself. So we're taking damage from the dropship, I think our players are gonna learn real quick, it's kind of like, you're gonna be telling your teammates, please don't take fire from the dropship. You know, that's just damage that we can't afford, because that's free damage to the other team, you know, they, you took damage and they didn't even have to shoot you, and so your chances of winning the planet are gonna decrease, I think significantly, if you end up running up to this, trying to rush spawns and taking, you know, enemy fire from the dropship and turrets.
All right, yes, Phil did cut in line, he will be, uh, punished later. That being said, I'm certainly glad he did do that, because that was a lot of info, I wanted to hear, I'm sure you wanted to hear it too. Um, but this is now well over three hours, Russ, uh, we're gonna finish off here with a kind of a fun question from Dyris Nai, um, which is, why have you not released the Urban mech? Do you have concerns that it will be OP and dominate the game?
No, um, I don't have that concern, um, I don't know if we have a really good answer for that, I just think that, one, it's like, in a lot of ways, it's just kind of one of those joke, jokes, and it's become, I think, much more than a joke now, I understand that, I think in the earlier days, as people's, as much as they asked for it, I think it was more of a joke. Now it's evolved into something, I think, much stronger than a joke, and people actually want it. Um, and I think there's also been some, some concerns about, well, that's great, but it's kind of, what's it gonna do, you know, it's a piece of crap. But we'd have to, um, you know, do some funny things, so if they want it to be viable, what does that mean, are we gonna have to? I mean, right away, people have rightly brought up that just because it is what it is in lore, certainly doesn't mean it isn't viable in our game, I mean, and our game has different rules, right? It's a 30-ton mech, I think 30, right? Is it 30? Someone correct me, say something. 30, 35, okay.
It's 35.
Ah, jeez, he said 30, and then he said 35, why did he do that? Okay, 35-ton mech, and, uh, it's got an AC-10, and it moves like, super slow, but in our game, of course, this engine rules, like, I mean, I suppose, it's just up to us if we want to set the engine rules in a way we like, you know, I mean, maybe the stock mech is slow like a lore, but I mean, you know, we can make it maybe so it's not like a spider, but we can still make it so maybe if you choose to put a big engine in it, you can do, I don't know, 80 or 90 or something, you know, like something pretty decent and keep up with, and all the heavies and mediums.
Honestly, I think the biggest challenge there is Alex's, you know, making basically an R2D2 fit into this world and, and look really good.
Yeah, and some people have thought up, well, you'd have to have 360-degree, you know, turret capabilities to be viable, and have it go in reverse as fast as forward, and some ideas, I don't know how much, how necessary those are, because again, we can set the engine limitation in a way we want, and we can set the hard, we take liberties with hard points all the time, so I mean, you know, Yan Loeng is, you know, what is it? Two ballistic hard points in that arm, not just one, so, um, you know, same goes with this, you know, you can give it, people can choose to put, um, an ER Large laser in that energy hard point, not just a small laser. Um, so, go AC-2 and, uh, ER Large, that might work, that's not, I mean, that might have decent speed still, so um, plus, and in the energy spot, we can give it more than one hard point, so in the end, it might be like a lot of other, you know, 35-ton mechs, it just cruise around at reasonable speeds, reasonably quick speeds with like two ER Larges or something. You see that all the time with the 35-ton mechs, so you might be right, it's just about, hey, let's make it look cool, and if you do, I think MechWar Online already supplies enough rules that you can make it, you know,
Viable.
Is viable as any 35-ton mech, okay, that might be a bit of a stretch, but
It is 30-ton, by the way.
But it's 30. You weren't sure is why you were saying.
So none of us know.
Ah, I thought it was 30, see, I knew it, all I had to say was, yes, Russ, you're right.
You were, you were right originally, Russ. Now, uh, we, we do have 13 pages of questions, guys, we're sorry that we didn't get to all of them tonight. In fact, we didn't even get to half of them tonight, we could do this for probably 10 hours and still have questions left over, so I think that does warrant another town hall meeting sometime in the future, uh, Russ, you can call that. But, uh, thank you, big time for spending this much time, again, this was over three hours, this is after work, so we totally appreciate it, we appreciate all you people showing up, we had a great turnout tonight, uh, Phil, what do you think?
I was gonna say, I think a lot of useful information, and I just want to preface this, we may not have got to every single question today, and the topic, uh, at the very beginning was the past, so what we'll do is on the next one, and Russ, you'll let us know, and we'll get that info out, obviously, to everyone, so they can, uh, be here. But, uh, yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone, hey, uh, you know, appreciate you guys being, you know, civil, you know, um, that, that's the biggest thing is if you guys are civil, we'll, we'll ask as many questions as we can. And Russ, I just want to say thank you for coming out here, as well as Darren, and our support guys behind the scenes, Wingbreaker and Jay-Z doing some mod work behind the scenes, thank you guys, appreciate the time. And, uh, thank you everyone else for coming out here, and I just want to say, uh, just right off the bat, that, uh, you know, hey, if, if you enjoy this type of thing, we're pushing it, uh, uh, you know, you can, as for us, we've been bugging him about this stuff, and now that IGP's out of the way, we're able to do this, and that's really great, so hopefully you guys appreciate the open communication, and just remember, uh, you have to be positive for this to continue, so just keep that in mind. He's gonna keep doing it, and, uh, it's, it's sort of a, a relationship.
And also, if you, go ahead, Russ.
No, I'm just gonna throw a little, little, um, we're doing the deco system, we are We are hoping to make it so one of the channels um, will be user-generated content for the Deco system, so we're working through that. Technically, it's not that big a deal, it's really just gonna come down. No, 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 I've worked with a lot of US publishers and stuff, man, they all say decals too, I swear.
No, no, I, I would, anybody in the US would get punched in the face if they were to say that.
It's not like a hoose.
I, I've never honestly heard that word until you said it.
Alright, decals. There's uh, user-generated content, so technically it's, it's easy. Um, really, it's just about talking to the lawyers and making sure it's buttoned up. So you know, you guys can submit your decal and um, as long as it, you know, it'll, it'll almost certainly cost MC to submit one because that's kind of the risk of saying, that's how you buy it, but at the same time, if you submit, you know, the penis decal, uh, decal, sorry, I see you're screaming up. Um, you, you submit that one, then it's done, it's gone, man, so don't send penis ones in. Send in real ones, um, because it takes a lot of time to manage something like that. And um, that'd be cool, right? So we're thinking three channels.
Totally.
One for faction, so there's your house kierder one, one for your, you know, whatever, your silly magic eight balls and, and whatnot. And uh, one for user-generated stuff. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, so I just, I saw some chat about user-generated content in the thing and um, I know people mostly focus on maps with that, uh, but there is an area where we can um, you know, we can put it in there.
Somebody said a penis decal would be a decal. Anyway, um, I do want to also remind everybody that this content will be up on Twitch as a highlight. It'll be going up on YouTube and it will be going up on SoundCloud, so if you missed anything, it'll be available uh, very soon tomorrow, next day.
Alright guys, we're gonna go and wrap it up.
Thanks guys.
Just want to say thank you, Russ, for being here, thank you everyone. And if uh, if you like this sort of thing, or if you, this is your first time to uh, NGNGTV on Twitch, hit that follow button, that way you guys get email notifications when we do go live. We stream every single day, Monday through Friday and sometimes even during the weekends with some of our streamers. I will say that we will be uh, hosting and uh, spectating the Clan Novakat tournament this Saturday that starts at uh, 9:00 PM Eastern. I will be personally there doing the spectate tool and the camera for you guys, so that'll, that's gonna be going on this Saturday. So again, if you uh, if you like this sort of thing, hit that follow button. Um, and of course, you can follow us on Twitter and Facebook and don't forget, follow us, uh, you know, um, over at the forums, register, maybe even YouTube, I don't know, like, comment, subscribe. Alright guys, have a great night, be safe and uh, we will see you tomorrow. Until next time, MechWarriors.